We're good?
Yes, it is. On the note. Okay, good evening. I'd like to call this regular Select Board meeting of the Dalton Select Board to order. This is the Callahan Room of the Dalton Town Hall. It's 7:00 PM, May 13th, 2019. And all of those who are able and wish would you join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Nancy, could we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Mr. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Bartels.
Here.
Mr. Holler.
Here.
Mr. Boyle.
Present.
And Mr. Walter.
Here.
Okay, before we get into the minutes, I just want to say that it is 7 o'clock. The polls are still open until 8:00. And if you haven't gone out to vote, please do. Just a reminder that they are open until 8:00 PM. So, we have some minutes from April 22nd. And before we make a motion, I have a couple of things. Nancy, where you put Michael Fabiano?
I guess just now.
I think you're referring to, only because when I looked into the minutes further on, you had a blank where you needed someone's name.
Is that who he was?
No. It was Chief Cahalan. Where is it? I know it's here somewhere.
Chief who?
I thought you were trying to refer to Ed Bae.
I don't either. Because nobody signed in.
Where is it?
Yeah, I read that, John.
You have one?
There's one on page four.
Okay, hang on.
For the carnival?
Oh, that's Dan Downer.
Oh.
Daniel Downer. No, I take that back then. After, when I was reading about the...
But is the carnival one Daniel Downer?
Yes, it is. The carnival one is Daniel Downer. And with the... Okay, where you use Fabiano, it was under the flammable fluid registration renewal. And the only person I could think of that was speaking to these issues was Chief, the fire chief Cahalan, Carol Cahalan.
Okay, thank you.
So, that would be my guess as for who you're looking for.
You did refer to him as chief, but I didn't know if he was chief.
Oh, okay. Yeah, then it is Carol Cahalan. C.A.H.A.L.A.N. And...
So, who's Michael Fabiano originally?
Nobody.
Did I make him up?
I think it might have been your recorder that evening. But I'm guessing, because I don't know that Michael Sinopoli was here, I believe, running the camera.
He was on camera.
Right. But you have him listed. The other thing was, starting on page five and going until page nine, where you have Mr. Deet with a T.
It's Deep with a P.
Deep with a P. And there's just a correct-all type thing. You know, probably take care of it.
D.E.P.
D.E.P.
Okay, thank you.
And the only other thing, and I forgot to do it when I did the agenda, and this isn't anything for you to change, Nancy, but on page nine, we tabled the issue with whiting oil and the fee. And I said we were going to put it on the agenda for tonight and totally slipped my mind. So, it may be something for future agenda unless it's been taken care of. Ken, do you have any idea?
I'll let it place on future agenda. Will that work?
Yeah.
Well, it worked for John.
Yeah. Yeah. You guys can do what you want. Any rate, that's what I have. Anyone else have...
So, all of these Mr. Fabianos are Mr. Cahalan?
Yes, it is.
Chief Cahalan.
Chief Cahalan.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, John.
Go ahead, John.
I could be, on the front page, down paragraph five, where it says, "Mr. O'Neill." I could be wrong about this, but I think you've got O'Neill spelled wrong. Traditionally, it's N.E.I.L. But we can ask him, he's right here. How do you spell your last name?
D.O.N.E.I.L.
Thank you.
And it's multiple times through the text.
Thank you, I'm corrected.
Anyone else? Okay, could I have a motion?
I make the motion, we accept the minutes of April 22nd, 2019 Select Board Minutes at the night.
I'll second that.
Motion's remain seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Now, we have the public address to the board. And this is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, and the company or institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or their designee. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda is discussed by the board, please make the request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address comments to the board chair and be concise, please. Now, I know a number of people are here to address the board directly because you're on the agenda. So, you don't have to ask if you're going to address the board. But is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this point in time?
Mr. Staples is here for the junk car.
Yes, yeah.
So, if we want to address it later during the junk car time, do we have to ask you now?
We... yes.
I would like to address it at that time. After we're here.
All you have to do, Cheryl, is to identify yourself at this point in time.
Cheryl Nelson, Old Windsor Road.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Fred Lindberg, Old Windsor Road.
And this is for the junk car?
The junk car.
Right? Okay. All right. Moving along. We have an appointment to the Board of Health. And I have a memo here from Mr. Walto dated today. And it's the ratification of appointment to the Board of Health. And it says, "I hereby recommend for your ratification, the appointment of Mark..." Is it Del Grande?
Yes.
Or Del Gran? Del Grande?
I think it's Del Grande.
Del Grande. Of 92 Riverview Drive to the Board of Health for an initial term to expire on June 30th, 2020. He replaces Mr. George A. Drew Finn, who has resigned. The recommendation of the health agent, Edward Fahy, is enclosed for your further information. Thank you for your consideration of this appointment. And in Mr. Fahy's, excuse me, memo to Mr. Walto dated May 6th, it states, "Dear Ken, I met with Mr. Del Grande and we discussed his interest in serving on the Board of Health. He would like, he would replace Drew Finn, who resigned due to personal matters. Mark has an engineering background and currently works for Kelly Granger Parsons and Associates doing field work. I think he would be a good replacement for Drew. I would like to recommend we appoint Mark to the board as soon as possible. We have an upcoming vote on the new recycling regulation, May 28th, and it would be nice to have him appointed by then if possible." And he states Mr. Grande's address, which we already stated. Thank you, Edward Fahy, Health Agent. So, may I have a motion?
I make a motion, we appoint Mark Del Grande of 92 Riverview Drive to the Board of Health for an initial term to expire on June 30th, 2020.
I'll second that.
The motion has been made, seconded, sir. Any discussion?
I'd like to just thank Drew. Drew was one of our initial appointments to the Board of Health. I mean, separated the Board of Health from the Select Board about 15 years ago. He served diligently, including, I think, as just as chair as well. So, I want to thank him for all his work under that for the time.
Thank you for mentioning that. And he has done a lot of work there and other places for the town as well. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. We now have a report from, of the Traffic Commission with regard to Washington Mountain Road and Kirchner Road signs. And I'm not going to read Mr. Filio's memo here because you're going to over it in depth, right, Dan?
It goes deep as you want me to go.
That's... you have free rein. But this is stemming from conversations that Dan and I have had with residents up there who asked, and Chief Coe as well, who have asked for certain things to be done with roadway and with warning signs at the intersection of Kirchner Road and with various places along Washington Mountain Road. So, with that, Dan, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Just to clarify, to make sure everybody understands, is that there's... We've been working on Washington Mountain Road to do updates on that road for about two years. We've been looking at it, a lot of things we've been trying to do. And some of the residents, we had voted on doing certain things. Some of the residents had come forward and had asked for us what our considerations were to do with signs. They had a meeting with Chairman Bartels. I had spoken with them. And back about a week and a half ago, Chairman Bartels, John Ruffly, and I went up to the area to view and talk about what the residents had asked for and to consider what the options could be. Based on this, the information we gathered, we... I went before the Traffic Commission, explained to them what happened and what we had been looking at. And the recommendation to the Select Board has to do with the following areas. Signs on Washington Mountain Road. The suggestion is it's seven Chevron signs. And with my presentation to the Select Board, you should see the signs. I gave you maps of the signs. I'm talking about the W-18 at the bottom. Seven of these Chevron signs between Ashley Way and Deer Run Road, basically facing north, which is down the mountain. And with, you may have seen reflectors they have been putting on telephone poles. They're about nine, 10 inches long. They're yellow and/or white. Having those on the posts in such a way is that people coming down the mountain will see that reflective and it would help them see that there is a bad corner there. That we have a dangerous curve sign, W-412, to replace a bump sign facing south near 465 Washington Mountain Road. At one point in time, there was a big dip in the road, which, when there was some work done on drainage and other issues on the road, it was corrected. There's no longer felt that there's a need for the bump sign. And that would be a good area. It is above the final corner on Washington Mountain Road. And we felt it would be a good area to put the dangerous curve sign. Once again, we're dealing with setting up reminders for the people coming down the mountain. Things that they can see to make sure that what they're thinking about is not what's on the radio, but where they're driving. At the top of the mountain, at the town line, there's a 30 mile an hour sign post. We're suggesting that we mount on that same sign post, a vertical grade sign with a 10 degrees grade indicated. It's a W-7-1A sign. BRPC, I spoke with them, dealt with them. They were able to take the elevation and the grade of the mountain coming down and come up with a determination of what the average grade is coming down that mountain. We feel that indicating what the grade is is something that would be helpful for anybody that's in a heavy vehicle, telling them, "Okay, wait a minute, we have to deal with a 10% grade." So, it would just, once again, help make it safer in that area. There's two equestrian signs. At one point in time, those had been erected because there was a barn up there that residents who didn't live on the mountain but used the barn for horses. They're no longer used. It's not an issue. So, the residents asked for those to be removed. So, we placed that in here for them to be removed. The final thing on Washington Mountain Road was to place reflective tape on the guardrails above Ashley Way. As you're coming up the mountain, you'll see the guardrails and they curve off to the side. They're older guardrails, they're gray. There might be some foliage in front of them. What they've asked is that we put reflective tape on those corners. And so, we've recommended that to the Select Board. Just visibility of the corners as they're coming up. Finally, for the area, there was a sign on Kirchner Road. On Kirchner Road, we have a yield sign for our dangerous intersection. People come up, come off of Dalton Vision Road or Williams Street and they head up the road. And it appears that Washington Mountain Road continues to go straight onto Kirchner Road. So, there's been numerous accidents that have been caused by people just heading forward, not realizing or not acknowledging vehicles coming down the mountain. So, what we have asked is that there be a left turn to oncoming traffic. An S.Q., S.K.U., K-644 sign placed on Washington Mountain Road, approximately 75 yards west of the driveway to 72 Washington Mountain Road. This should give more than ample time for the person to realize that there is traffic coming and to be aware that traffic's coming down the mountain. And the final thing that we've asked for the Select Board to approve is that we discussed the solar sign that the Select Board has approved in the past. We went up to the area, we looked at the area, and we believe that the location adjacent to, between 350 and 330 Washington Mountain Road would be an appropriate area. It's near a culvert owned by the town. It's also at the border of the two properties, and there's a living fence between the two properties. There's more than enough area to place that off the roadway, give you very good visibility of this sign as you come up the mountain. And it is, would receive ample sunshine to operate the sign, which is a solar powered sign. So, are there any questions? That's what we've recommended at this time for that.
The only question I've had here, Dan, is going up the mountain is considered south?
Yes.
And going down is north?
Yes.
So, that being the case, like with the Chevrons and the reflective...
It should say north.
It should be the other way around, right?
Yes, it should say facing north.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I guess everything else is... Well, the reflective tape, it's on the existing guardrails, correct?
Yes.
At Ashley Way? So, that should be... Well, it's, those are the only guardrails that are there, but that should be facing south as well? Or is that a matter of how you look at it?
No. Once again, I apologize.
Okay.
I did have the wrong... And it's important that we make sure it is facing the proper way. To put it on the back of the guardrail, she probably would have liked it.
So, both instances on here where it says facing north are facing south?
Okay, where... okay, you're looking at the memo, Nancy?
Yep, seven Chevron.
Okay, where it says, "Signs on Washington Mountain Road," the very first...
Seven Chevron.
Just changed north to south, south to north. And then the last one under Washington Mountain Road just changed north to south.
Oh, if I may, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I just reread. The Chevron should face north and the reflectors should face south. That's the way I had originally written it. I had to read through it again. You understand, as you're coming up the mountain, you should see the Chevron.
Yes. Oh, okay.
And as you're coming down the mountain, you should see the reflective. So, we should leave that as it was.
The first one as it is?
Thank you very much for collecting that.
Oh, no, I was, you know, that's...
I did the same thing you did.
That's my fault. Okay.
So, it's only the tape that has to be south instead of north?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, with that...
East and west are okay?
Yeah.
Just asking.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, Dan was saying that the three of us went up there to look at this and discuss it. And it seemed to be the best way to do this at the least expensive for the town. Because there was thought of adding guardrails or whatever up there. But this seems to be a better solution. Any questions for Dan?
Excellent, John.
Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead, John.
This all started, well, there's been problems there for years, but this all started as a result of a truck going out of control and going through someone's property two or three years ago. I assume this is the solution that we have found, and for the time being, this is it?
This is the best solution to date that we've been able to come up with.
Yep.
We looked at a number of different options that we were not allowed to do.
Right, such as banning truck traffic and other things that were suggested at the time, even by this board. So, this is it. I mean, it's not that it can't evolve, but this is it.
Unless we straighten the corner out.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We were working with the other talent there. They came to the meeting that night?
It was... There was Beckett.
Beckett.
Yeah, they came to state that they were not in favor of the ban. Well, Washington, Washington is allowing us, the town of Washington is allowing us to put this solar sign in their town, correct?
A separate solar thing. There's two solar...
Right, a separate solar sign, right.
There'll be a flashing solar sign at the top of the mountain that will just have a sign on it that says Dangerous Curve, and it'd be flashing 24 hours a day to allow, just as a further warning for trucks coming down the mountain.
Okay. Anything else? Do you have a motion?
I make a motion, we allow the Dalton Traffic Commission to place additional signage in the area of Kirchner Road and Washington Mountain Road as per their memo.
I'll second that.
The motion's remain seconded. Sir, further discussion? Anything to add, Dan?
I do not. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extensions? Thanks again, Dan. Okay. So, we shift to junk car removal update. And we have two individuals here to request for extensions or, I'm not sure exactly what, at this point in time. I know that we heard from Mr. Neal? Or is it O'Neill?
O'Neill.
O'Neill, I'm sorry. Mr. O'Neill, last week, or last meeting. And he was invited here for this meeting. And we have Mr. Staples from Depot Street, who would like to speak about his citation. So, why don't we, why don't we hear from Mr. O'Neill first? And then we'll get into a discussion on that, and then we'll move to Mr. Staples. Staples? Mr. O'Neill?
I mean, I'm not the one who has a problem with the cars, so I guess, you know, I have cars in my yard and I use them for Lebanon Valley. And some of them are big and lifted for, you know, going in the woods and helping my kids. And some of the other ones are soon to be worked on. I'm looking for a garage. And it's also really, really, really muddy in my backyard. I tried to get one of them out the other day. I was stuck for a few hours with my dump truck. And it's just real tough getting them out on top of it, but, yeah, I don't know.
What are you looking for from the board?
I don't know. I guess I'm just here because everyone else seems to have a problem with the cars. So, I'm trying to make everyone else happy, I guess. So, whatever everyone else needs, I'll try to work with them, I guess. I don't really know.
Mr. Chairman?
At the last meeting, we had decided that you were going to let us know exactly what cars were there. How many?
Yeah, I have, I got rid of a couple since then. Two or three, I believe. Two, and I got one on the trailer ready to go. I have two that are lifted up for using in the woods. And then I got two or three that are for Lebanon Valley that will be gone after July and June. There's two different events that I'll use them for, so it'll be gone after that. They usually get totaled out. And then the other few that are there will be gone when I find a shop. I'm looking for a shop. I mean, I'd like to work on them in the driveway, but I know that that's going to cause a commotion too, and...
What is your address?
326 Old Windsor Road. I mean, they're all in the backyard. You can't see them from the road. And nobody had a problem with them until one of my neighbors is trying to move. You know, he used to help me when I was moving them in and out. He'd bring his tractor down, help me out. It was never a problem until now he wants to move. And now it's a problem.
Okay. There are some residents here, Windsor Road. If you don't mind, I'll let them speak to this issue. Cheryl, go right ahead.
We kind of had a problem all along with it. We don't begrudge Mr. O'Neill anything, Mr. Chairman, but we had a problem with the cars being put back in the wetlands because they could be. I don't know what kind of cars they are, but we can see them from our property, which is a few down from there. We're concerned about the leaking of oil and gas and possibly brake fluid and other things as he tries to get them out, indeed. But that he put them, you know, way down in the wetland, there's concerns there. And there's a lot of working going on there. Some comes in the middle of the night when the tractors come in, you know, from Lebanon Valley. It hasn't happened now because it's off-season, but, you know, it wakes us up. So, it's been a concern, actually, since he moved in. It is a residential area. He has a small area there. And it is, there's not only the cars, there's also, I guess, a big, you know, fire with mantresses and things. And it's just, it's a bit going on there.
I'm trying to picture, I'm trying to picture where the house is.
Exactly. You don't even know.
Is it Wexler's old house?
Yes, it's Wexler's old house.
Wexler's old house.
So, he's...
Which is in between... Brennan?
Lindberg and Brennan, yeah.
Lindberg and Brennan. Okay.
It has been a concern. Again, I have nothing against Mr. O'Neill, but since he's moved there, and I know he's trying to make a living, and we are, but it's been rather a nuisance in many different areas and a Board of Health issue, I feel. And a Conservation Commission issue too, with all the fluids. I don't know if any of them currently leaking since there's so many vehicles or if they could be. I don't know whether they're living or not, but they could be. And as he tries to, it's difficult, like he says, to pull them out. I don't know what will happen then to the environment and to the wetland. I'm very concerned.
Okay. Anyone else? Brett?
Yeah, Fred Lindberg, 334 Old Windsor Road. From our house, if you look out the picture window, you can see like four or five cars and now, I think, a Sander. And, you know, there's blue tarps on the house and buildings and stuff. I wouldn't mind as much if they were brown or green tarps. They wouldn't show up as bad. But we used to have a nice view from the house. We don't anymore. And what he's doing to our land valuations. And I have no problem if he gets an extension for getting rid of the cars, which sounds like he's trying to do, right? I would rather not see him get fined because that money could go towards paying for a flatbed to help get rid of the stuff. And for the time being, I think that he should be required to tow the ones from the swamp up into the yard farther so they're not in the wetland area. So, they don't leak into the wetland. But I would rather see... But I would rather see a friendly resolution to the whole situation.
Okay.
And I did, I happened to meet him this winter when one of his trees blew down. We had like a 60 mile an hour wind. The tree blew into my yard, and I came home, and he was out chainsawing it up and pulling it back onto his yard. And I found him to be a very personable guy. So I think we can come to a solution.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment on this? Chief?
The only I can tell you is we're, with his fines, is we're sitting at, he had a second offense, which the first one, as you know, is a warning for all these.
Yes.
And he has, he has sustained a $275 fine for the second. We've kinda parked it here until we've decided what we're gonna do, but every 30 days, it'll go up to a third, to the maximum of $300 per car.
So we're talking, how many vehicles on your list?
So we had an initial count of 11. And he seems to have just reported that there's, well, if he gets rid of the one on the truck, 10.
Okay, anything else?
No, I just wanted you to know where we're with the fines.
Okay. Mr. O'Neill, you, you had a timeline on getting whatever vehicles out of there by a certain time. There was an end time to get all of them out of there, by the sounds of it, correct? Or am I hearing you wrong?
I thought we had, I talked on the phone with the co, something about June 1st. I thought was mentioned, and like I said, I get stuck back there. And I put them back there in the first place because people have a problem with it. When they see them, they have a problem. If there wasn't a problem, they wouldn't have been stuck back there.
Well, they're, to me...
They're not leaking, they're not being ran out of work jobs.
And interject, gentlemen, too. To me, I, I have, I have a problem with where they're at right now. With, with a environmental issue, by the sounds of it. I, I don't know what's in back of your house, but by the sounds of it, it's sloppy. And it's, it's hard to get in unless it's a dry season. But besides that, I want to add, Bob, if you have something to...
Unfortunately, there's two members on the select order, conservation commissioners. If this comes before the conservation commission, we'll make you move them out of there because they're illegal, okay?
Okay. Can I say two things?
Go ahead, and then I'm gonna let the rest of the board make comments.
Um, one, you're allowed to interject the soil back there, if, you know, it's leaking. And two, my purchase of property, nobody ever said anything about it being a wetland or anything like that. It was never brought up, so...
I'm not, I'm not gonna, personally, I'm not gonna get into that because these two guys are more knowledgeable with it than I am about what constitutes a wetland or, or what, what endangers all other soils or, or property. So, John Markin, anything?
Oh, we got a little bit of stray here. With the neighbor's comments that this is a nuisance and such and such. It's commendable, and we're glad you're here to support this. As far as the wetland issue, perhaps we should stay away from that for now. What the police department has determined is clearly in violation of the junk car, unregistered vehicle bylaw. That's the basis, that's why the chief of police is here, that's why Mr. O'Neill's here. Now, there's statutory deadlines before another action is taken. And I think that's plain and simple of it. The board ought to just put the chief out.
Well, what I'm, if we, if we grant an extend, well, have we, we have not granted an extension on this at all, ever.
Correct.
What I was getting at, John, was if we grant an extension, we just don't say, oh, it's 180 days, and those things sit there if they're in a wetland. Maybe we could grant an extension, but these vehicles that are in this wet area, they gotta get out of there post case. That's, that's kinda what I was getting at. But I don't know...
Yeah, but what does that solve, John? He gets them out of the wetland, just brings them up to the house and parks them?
But if we give him so many days to get rid of all the cars, but before, before that does take place, they have to be moved out of this wet area so not to contaminate any longer. Whether he, when he gets to the final day where he has to get rid of them, that's, then we, then we deal with it as an extension of the junk car bylaw.
Fine with me?
But I, I'm open to suggestion here as to, to what to do.
Well, I totally support they should be pulled up out of there if he needs an extension.
Did June, go ahead, Mark.
I was just, you're creating yourself a headache here. Because you're gonna wind up having the conservation commission involved with this. You live in a residential area, you have 10 or 11 cars on your property, you can't do that. That's why you've been cited this time. You need to clean up the property, clean up the cars, get them out of there. You don't want the conservation commission out there. You wanna start getting $300 per car fine, you need to just clean it up. It's a residential area. And I feel for you. I feel for you, but it is what it is. It's where you live, and that's, it's a residential area.
Anything?
Yeah, I would agree with what you said there.
Yes. I do too. Mr. O'Neill?
Can I have any of them for like, you know, like I said, like off-road, and obviously, they're never gonna be... I mean, if I were to go and put every single one on the road, right, it's not a problem, they have a plate on them. So can I have any of them for Lebanon Valley or for Wheeling in the woods?
I think your problem is this, is you have too many at this point. Had you had one or two back there or something like that, you probably wouldn't have an issue. But you have 11, you had 11, you have 10 now, that's your issue. And that's where you're at now. And now you're in front of the board, now you've been cited, and...
Okay, as for, as for getting, getting rid of cars in a certain amount of time, was July 1st one of your dates that you were talking about to get them, to get most of them out of there?
Uh, that was something that had been mentioned, yes.
July 1st?
June 1st was...
June, June, yeah, sorry.
Next check would be Jill, in the 30-day progression here, the next check is Junie.
Okay.
Then it would be July.
Okay.
It'll be August. Yeah, I do want to give, I would give an extent, I do want to give an extension to July 8th, knowing that Lebanon Valley has their EVA destruction or whatever, is that what you're going for?
Yeah, technically, tough trucks is July 20-something, but yeah, I mean, if I got all of, besides the three that were gonna be for over there or something...
I think the neighbors would be, you know, they seem to be reasonable and willing to work with them to get them out of there. But I think, I would be open to doing till July 8th and extending to that date.
Can you get them out of there by July 8th?
I'll do my best. I mean, like I said, I'm gonna sync up a few...
Well, the thing is, is that we're gonna give you till, if we give you till July 8th, that's, that's, that's the date.
Yeah, no, I'll give, like I said, I'll give it my all, I don't have a problem with that. You know, I'm just gonna, you know, yeah, I'll do it. Not gonna argue with it.
Just to clarify, it's a drop dead day, July 8th. Every part vehicle will be off the property, out of the wetlands, off the property. The only remaining vehicles that can be allowed on your property are ones that are registered.
Okay.
Any comments?
Can I, yes, can I, I have a question, I just, he said I'm gonna stick a plate on every single one. They have to be registered and insured. You can't get a registered unless they're insured. So we do run plates to make sure that it is, in fact, not just a plate that he transferred to it, that it's registered and insured.
Okay.
The second question is, we have $275 worth of fines. If he takes care of it on July 8th and they're all gone, can we just scrub the fines? And if not, we continue, we have to continue from that point every 30 days until I get to 300 for each one. So I'm just asking that, at least to understand that we, we're still at this 275 level, and then it will continue every 30 days. I just need you to understand that I have to wait every 30 days in order to refine until we get to the maximum fine. But are you, my guess, my question is, is if he takes care of them, why is scrubbing the $275 fine?
I wouldn't mind that.
I think it's a good incentive, it is added incentive for him to take care of it.
I wouldn't mind doing that, but again, going by your plan as for how to find it in the future, if this is not taken care of by the 8th of July, it's a start from there.
Because we've just hit pause, is what we've done. If he takes care of it, we're gonna delete it.
Right.
If not, we're gonna continue to press play from pause. I just need that from you because you're the ultimate authority on that, and so that's my instruction.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, you have that, why don't you make the motion on that, Mark?
I'll make the motion, we give an extension till July 8th, that we pause all fines, fines until then. If it's taken care of on July 8th, we will waive the fine. And if not, the fine will progress from the $275.
Right.
I'm second.
Motion for main and second, sir, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Okay. Understand, if you have any questions during this process till, till then, get a hold of the chief. Okay. All right. Did you have a question, Dan?
I have a question, John. He will pull them out of the wetland though, before, before July 8th, I hope. The longer he leaves them in there, the more they become mired in there. The more they're mired in there, like the good of breaking a brake line or rupturing the radiator is more apt to happen.
What can the conservation commission do?
We can make them get them out of there.
Well, I realize that, but I mean, to, to view what's down there?
We would have to do a site visit.
When, when could you do that? Or when could that be requested, or whatever?
First of all, we have to ask permission to go on the land. If you don't have permission on the land, we have to get it from the neighbors. And first, we gotta make sure it is a wetland too, we'll go and verify if it's a wetland.
I'm willing to pull them up, how far?
I don't know what your property, that's what I mean, I don't know what your property is like.
You know, I've never even heard this. I know what a wetland is, but I've never, you know what I mean, heard of that. I'm willing to pull them up, if that's what the problem is, okay? But to what, you know what I mean, then I bring them in the front?
Well, I guess in a reason, in a reason, in a reasonable area that doesn't look wet.
It's all, it's all wet, you know what I mean? It's been raining every single day.
Yeah, I realize, I realize. Fred, go ahead and make the last comment here.
Yeah, it's, the back of our property, there's a whole swamp between us and Tache's who are buying them. And where the cars are is down in the really wet zone, and it's uphill from there, so there's, you know, if you pull them up 30 to 50 feet, probably, it's dry enough.
Sounds good.
Good? Good, thank you. Okay, anything else? Will we clear up this matter for the time being? Okay. Next, thank you for your input, and Chief, just sort of, what's going on? Okay, Depot Street, Mr. Staples.
I'd like to give you these so you can all, they'll be important in a moment. By the way, this is Husatonic Street. This shed is on Husatonic. We have two lots, and it's on Husatonic. It's on Husatonic Street. Right where the shed is. Since 1998, I give you these because there are nine extensive perennial gardens that they come to take pictures of, were noted in the town, where there's one of the oldest residents of these gardens. There are over 100 statues, all of the, all of the big bulbs, all of the vases, all the pillars, all of them.
Could you move back to the tables or...
Please. So it's just a matter of, and you can see, these are, you're showing all the different areas than the rest of it. And the shed, there are no tires, there never have been since 1998. No tires, the frame is sunk in the ground of the, of the, what looks like a trailer, which I guess when they were inspecting, it looked like was a vehicle, which it would definitely look like. Let me see here. Come on. Oh, it's that one. That's the shed where all of the statuary and all those things are, and I'm sure I think they're the outside of it as well. It's where all the statues and, it's the old trailer, and that's where we're able to have all of these gardens. Other than that, I don't have a place for all of this to be stored in the winter and the rest of it. And it's been that way since 1998. So I was quite shocked when, I mean, it would look, let me see if I've got that picture, because it, it was once an old trailer from, God knows, 1960.
It looks, if, if you could go back to your seat, that would be fine, okay? It looks like it's an old camper trailer. Am I right, chief?
Yeah, it would look like it's an old camper trailer.
But your pictures look nice with all the flowers and everything else, but I don't see any pictures of the trailer.
I, that's what I was gonna show you.
Well, it, you know, as to where it's located. Chief, could you explain where it's located on the property?
So it's not visible from Depot Street. It is visible from Husatonic Street towards the rear of the yard. It's a, it's a long yard that goes to, from Depot Street to the first driveway of LP Adams, that entire length.
Okay.
It's the second house down from Husatonic Street, so you have...
Brown House?
Two, two lots.
Yes.
Yeah, it's Joe Staples, it's a Joe's Bike Repair.
Oh, you mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I was thinking Husatonic Street, I know where Joe's, I know where David's...
But that long yard goes to the back, all the way to the Brown House of Husatonic.
Right.
And it's visible from there. It is an old camper, the door's open, he stated he uses it as a shed. I told him to come here, and if you guys deem this as a shed, I won't continue to violate it. If you deem it to be under the junk car, and everyone gets confused that the junk car in the first couple paragraphs deal with motor vehicles and motor vehicle parts, but if you continue to read the bylaw, it also deals with boat trailers, campers, and sites. So this is certainly under the bylaw.
It's basically anything that can be registered and put on the road.
And I only have it on my phone, but this is what it looked like this afternoon.
I have it on this afternoon too.
Did it go dim?
No, it's fine.
Yeah, I got it. Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, it's, it's definitely a trailer.
And if you want to deem it a shed, that's your power, and I will do whatever this board chooses.
Well, in my opinion, it's not a shed. Sorry, it's a trailer. If it doesn't have wheels on it, it could have wheels on it.
Sorry, you didn't go wheels in the frame, it's in the ground?
It had wheels on it at one point in time, it's parts thereof. And I believe that's what the bylaw says, parts thereof. Uh, and seems to be in violation of the bylaw. So, any comments?
Looks like a, looks like a trailer to me.
But, yeah, if I could just say one thing.
Go ahead.
As Mr. Staples so aptly pointed out, it has been here for 20, 30 or more years. And the family, Joe Staples, as you said, converted, converted, this is the operative word, into a tool shed. It's where they store their tools, and their flowering apparatus. Now, this, to me, is a very difficult call. But based on the fact it's been there so long with no issue, there is no complaints from the neighborhood, i.e. myself, I'm a neighbor, I should disclose that. Also a friend of Mr. Staples for many years. And, and one more thing for the record, it's not Husatonic Street, it's Jesus with Tony Street.
It is Husatonic.
Okay.
So I think the board should give Mr. Staples the benefit of the doubt as being a conversion, and let him to continue with his flowering masterpieces.
Were there complaints on this?
Perhaps not. I was asked to do a townwide blanketing, and it's a black and white issue. It is not my job to make decisions. It either has a plate, or it's rusted out, and, or it doesn't have a plate. But I let you be the deciding factor.
Well, looking at it, looking at the bylaw, as far, as far as I am concerned, it's a, it's a junk car. It's a, it's a junk motor vehicle, not motor vehicle, trailer, sorry. That's what I feel.
I do feel it, it's good to reuse things when they're no longer being used as a motor vehicle. As someone said, it's, it's, it's really hard. Unpleasant that we had to make a decision.
It never was a motor vehicle. It was a total long trailer.
It's a trailer, it's a trailer.
It was a trailer.
Yes.
That's the operative word. It was. Now, it's been converted to a metallic, just like in everybody else's backyard, tool shed.
I think Mr. O'Neil's gonna have a loving tool shed in exactly his area.
Well, that's, that's a point.
Yeah, I think
Yeah, you would do.
We gotta be careful, because everybody could put a trailer in there or something like that.
Okay.
Just hoping that a can of worms, as far as I'm concerned.
I do too. I, I, I don't see, and I, I understand it's been there forever. And maybe not, and maybe not seen, but again.
There was no idea hiding it, no idea of, would have taken it out of there if knew it was illegal, or someone had said it was a bylaw 20, 30 years ago, 10 years ago, whatever, would have been fine. They would have taken it out. It could have even then. Now, with it sunk in the ground, I'm gonna have to bring in a, I guess, I, I don't know what I'd bring in there now. My mother just died, my aunt just died, my father's there, he's dying, and now I'm gonna bring in, I guess, a, I don't know what I'm bringing in. To even get the frame out. And I say since 1998, it's way before that even. That's when I came back, and the damn thing was already there.
Again. If we're, if we're looking at this, um, like the other vehicles that come before us, or the other parts of vehicles that come before us, it falls under the bylaw, and it needs to be taken care of. The conversion, well, is it a conversion, or was it just a convenience, too?
There's a total conversion in terms of
I mean, it was, it was left there because it was a good place to store things, but it's, wasn't the proper thing to store things in. Should have been a shed.
I don't know what you mean by that.
What I'm saying is, is that it was there to begin with, okay? It wasn't gonna be used for anything. Well, let's put stuff in it to store things. And that's what it has become since, what you say, 1998, 20 years ago.
It leaves that.
But.
It admittedly, a conversion is taking place from its original, uh, determination. Now, it's something else. It's a story shed.
I would, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Can we table this to the next meeting, so I can, or to the July, so I can go take, I wanna take a site visit, and take a look at this thing? About that?
Well, the thing is, I can always, what, do you want me to what, just stake it down? Does that solve it? If I just take the whole thing down?
It would, that, that would solve the issue, yes, to take it down, to get rid of it. That's what, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to clean up the, either the unregistered junk or dilapidated cars, parts thereof, or trailers, where they're on people's property.
The back wall I've gotta replace if I was gonna store anything in it again, even for the winter. But I mean, I don't know if that's considered renovation either, but I mean, it's a matter of that, I, I, it is collapsing at the back, that I have to take the back off and the rest of them. I didn't know what I was going to do with that.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea to take a look at a table. You know, maybe some parts of it, you know, you could still leave and it not be a junk vehicle.
Well, that's what I'm saying. What would be, be taken away from it where it isn't a junk vehicle anymore?
Well, then, then it's a matter of, okay, does it fall under building permit guidelines, uh, for a shed? And I know that there are certain particular things that constitute a shed. Is it a health hazard, the way it is? Uh, is it a place where vermin can collect? And that was one of the things, and I, I think it's even mentioned in the bylaw about that. That's one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons for not letting them stay there, because then they attract these things, and it becomes an health issue. So.
Well, would you give me, how much time do you give me to take it down?
How much time do you need?
Well, this is the height of the garden season, where until June 1st is really, I mean, where you're just night and day working in the gardens.
Where, where are we at, chief, with fines? Has this been fined?
I don't think it has. I think the first one was a warning, and then you requested a period.
Right. I mean, could I have till the middle of July at least?
It's a warning. The next check date was June 1st.
Do you want, do you want to do a July 8th? Extension?
I would like to have him to the end of July.
Yes.
That would be great if you could. Would that be okay with you, to take him to the end of July?
You guys are gonna deal with this, so, you do what you're on.
What?
I am not passing the buck here, I'm just telling you. I mean, it's one of these things where it, it's all, it's really up to you as for how long you want an extension. I, I, the, the height of the growing season ends, you were saying, June 1st.
Well, that's when you have to have everything in, and then it's a matter of, with having to take care of the father, it just gives me time to get all this taken care of.
Okay. And by, if you, you give him till the, uh, July, July 8th date to keep in line with your inspections, I think it would just be easier if you did it.
All right, it's an issue after that.
And then, and then if it is still an issue, we'll deal with it at that point in time, but seeing that we're at a warning stage now, going along with your schedule and how you're checking these things, let's do it July 8th.
Okay. And if you need extra time, now, talk with Chief Gollum, come back before the board arrives a letter.
Okay.
My big question, the only thing I'm worried about is the frame that's on the bottom. Can one build up from that, or does that have to go too? That's the thing that's impossible.
That's, that's a building, building issue, permit issue?
Oh, okay, yep.
As for what the proper foundation is for those things, or what you can build on, I, I don't know.
I mean, like a trailer you drag in behind your car or something, I guess.
Yeah, I would check with the building inspector. All right, thank you.
Well, we have to vote on this anyways.
Okay, and make a motion to give Mr. Staples to July 8th to
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in seconds. Sir, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you need somebody to get out, or give me a call.
Okay, the last one, we do have a letter, uh, from, uh, Peggy Riley on Norris Street, 493 Norris Street, with regard to a school bus on her property. And it says, Dear Sirs, I'm wanting to request a 180-day extension on the 30 days to remove registered mini-school bus on my property. My intention, when I purchased the bus from Dufour, was to fix, register, and insure the bus. I was assured the brakes needed about $300 were, 200, $2,700 later, the brake light was still not out, and the mechanic had a heart, uh, well, had a heart attack. I then found out, uh, that I could not register the bus as a bus in Massachusetts, and needed to convert it to a van designation, which needs to be done in another state, and then transfer it to Mass.
Wow.
Okay. Needless to say, I'm still trying to figure out how to accomplish this, and would appreciate the extension and have time to do so. Thank you for your consideration, Peggy Riley, 493 Ma, uh, Norris Street, Dalton. Where's this, what's this status, chief?
So, it's parked actually, uh, close to the dirt road in front of the residence.
Yeah.
It's a, uh, one of the shorter yellow school buses.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't, I didn't hear what she was using for it, but I don't know if it was like a daycare or, um,
It was probably to, to transfer students.
Yeah, and there is a plate on it, a regular plate, but it's not registered or insured.
Oh, I mean, what I was looking for is, has she been fined?
No, this is a warning.
This is a warning?
Yes.
She says an extension on the 30 days. So, she hasn't been granted, she hasn't come before us for an extension before. I can't remember.
She's within the 30-day warning period to take care of it.
Oh, she's in that period.
And she has an option to request an extension within that 30 days, and that's, it sounds like what she's doing. She has not contacted me, so.
What about July 8th?
Sounds like a magic number.
Yeah.
I mean, she's got, evidently, she's got issues to, to deal with this, and she's trying to, uh, get it registered properly, so she can use it. Uh, I don't, I don't thi, I don't think 180 days is, is appropriate, uh, but, uh, if we do the same thing and keep, uh, with your schedule, would be appropriate. Comments? Any other ideas?
She can come back and request another extension or something.
At that point in time?
Yeah.
Okay. Could I have a motion?
I make a motion, we grant Peggy Riley, um, 493 Norris Street, to July 8th, an extension to July 8th, to, uh, to her bus register.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconds. Sir, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Okay, thank you.
I just give you an update for the October sweep. We only have seven remaining properties that were dealing with cars. That was from the Octobers.
Mm-hmm.
From the April sweep this year, we started with 18 additional violations, and we are down to 11 as of today.
Good.
So, that means, uh, seven have already, mostly they were just unregistered. They got the cars registered and insured, so we're all set.
Okay.
I just wanted to give you an update. So, that would be a total of 18 properties, including the Bennett and Martin property.
Okay.
What do we stand with Bennett? Is he making any progress up there at all?
It's been difficult to tell, because there are some that have left, and then there's new ones that arrive.
There's new ones coming in?
So, and again, it's a, it's a car business, so, uh, if we allow them, the five, to sell, and then the ones that have registrations do not fall under the law, there's still seven vehicles, mostly on the, well, he would pick the cars, but it looks like, if you're looking at the business, on the east side are, are still salvageable, and could be probably registered and fixed. On the west side, it looks like junk cars, that can't even be salvageable, mostly in the truck form, so. If he took care of the seven cars on the west side, the rest would probably fall under his operating license.
But he doesn't have that anymore.
I do know it. Right, right.
Correct, Ken?
He didn't pay.
He did not.
He did not, he knew it.
So, then, all those, the five for sale would have to go as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. And what's the next step with him? It's just?
Uh, so basically, I believe you gave him an extension until, oh, I don't know. You gave him an extension till about July. Most people are either June 1st or July. He may even be the June 1st. I'll have to look at it. Um, but we would just, we basically put it on pause, and now we'll start with the fines.
Okay.
And he has gotten multiple notifications of that in writing. He's denied some, um, what's his special type of, certified mail?
Mm-hmm.
He's refused to receive some, he has gotten multiple notices, including phone notices, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Anything else before we move on to your, to your next? Okay, which is interdepartmental transfers, and Chief Coe has one, as well as Patrick Pettit, and Chief, why don't we, uh, you're asking, you're asking for a transfer of $77,000 from Communications to your police department's salary due to officers being out, overtime, whatever. So, I'll, I'll let you describe it if you're with me.
Correct. This money is directly related to three different officer injuries, two on duty, which I need to let you know was, is also covered by insurance. So, and then the one off-duty who used sick time has been brought back out of light duty, and is expected to have a full recovery and be back to work at some point. So, when you hear $77,000, that is an extremely large amount. Uh, for my department, historically, uh, it does not go over by that much. What you need, what I'd like you to keep in mind is that by July 1st or June 30th, the insurance will have paid back to the town approximately $51,000. So, um, again, 77 is being requested, 51,000 is being, was insured for this, for salary. And the only reason, it just doesn't go back to my line item. It goes into the reserve fund in workman's comp. And I, it's a tougher approval to go to town meeting to get that from that line into my budget, so. Dispatch, if you remember, is paid by, you, you budget it, but there's a grant that pays salary. Uh, the director of Communication assures me that there will be $77,000 to bring over, to cover that, and still be intact. Her budget will still be intact, because it's gonna be replenished by a grant.
Okay.
So, I know it sounds like a large item, a large request, but if you take away the $51,000 of recovery insurance, it
It's like net 26.
Yes. It's a little more manageable price for me to come and ask for, um, but I have to ask it in the form of $77,000.
Any questions for the chief?
A procedural question, Jack.
Yes, sir.
Do we have the authority to do this, transfer money from one department to another?
Yes, under Municipal Modernization Act now, it's been, this has been, this has been in effect for about 10 years or so. But in 2016, the Municipal Modernization Act, um, took any of the constraints off it, so we can transfer from one department, uh, to the other in the last two months of the fiscal year. Both the Select Board and the Finance Committee have to concur.
Didn't we do this last year?
Yes.
And I forget the reason, probably the same, same reason.
So, this has to go to the Finance Committee after we do this?
And Finance Committee will meet, uh, Wednesday.
Okay, and we'd have to give you the authority to sign this? Or we just have to agree to it?
If you agree to it, I'll sign.
Okay. Further questions? Motion?
Sure. I make a motion, we allow the transfer of $77,000 from Communications salaries line 222.5114 to Police Department salary line 210.5131.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in seconds, sir. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Okay. The next one is, uh, the, from Mr. Pettit, for, uh, funds going into central supply. And, uh, Ken, could you give an exclamation of this?
Yeah, Pat did a good job of, uh, describing it. He wants to move $1,000 from the Town Hall budget, it's 196, to the, um, computer budget, which is 197, or IT, probably should call modern name. Really, um, he found, he's over by 1,500 bucks. He found, as he was going through things, that we needed a new printer for the account and the treasure, uh, and, uh, there were several battery backups. When we're going through, he was checking the battery backups, as we were putting the carpet in, he found, we, we needed some of those as well. So, there's about $1,500 in unforeseen expenses, uh, in that department, 197.
Any questions? Have a motion?
Sure. I make a motion, we allow a transfer of $1,000 from account number 196-5380 to the Seating Department account 197-5420.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in seconds, sir. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Okay. All righty. It's National Police Week, starting today. Correct? And Police Officers Memorial Day, which is gonna be the 15th. And because of that, uh, as we always do on every year, um, we, uh, receive a request from, from the chief to, uh, declare, declare this day as Police Officers Memorial Day. And I'll read the memo from, um, Chief Coe to, uh, Mr. Walto and us, and it's dated May 7th, 2019. It says, Congress has declared May 15th, 2019, as National Police Officers Memorial Day. This day honors all fallen law enforcement members. I hereby request that our American flag be lowered half-staff on May 15th, 2019. thousand and nineteen, in memory of all fallen law enforcement members. I have attached a copy of the proclamation for National Police Week, which falls between May eleventh and May seventeenth. Thank you for your cooperation and assistance with this important matter." And it, and it truly is an important matter, uh, that we honor, we honor these individuals. And I'm going to read the proclamation. The proclamation of the Select Board declaring May eleventh through May seventeenth as National Police Week, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Police Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the Town of Dalton play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Dalton. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the Town of Dalton unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, the Select Board of the Town of Dalton calls upon its all citizens of Dalton and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May eleventh through May seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, as Police Week, with, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community and in do, in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. The Select Board further calls upon all citizens of the Town of Dalton to observe Sunday, May fifteenth. Should be Wednesday. Should be Wednesday. Wednesday, May fifteenth, as Police Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In addition, the flag of the Town Hall shall be flown at half-staff on May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, in remembrance of law enforcement officers who have died while protecting the lives and freedoms of others. And a copy of this proclamation shall be delivered to the Chief of Police and each officer of the Dalton Police Department in recognition of said National Police Week and Police Officer Memorial Day. Hence, this day, May thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, we have hereunto set our hands and cause the seal of the Town of Dalton to be affixed, signed by myself, John Bartel Sr., Mark Strout, Robert Bishop, John Boyle, Edward Hollard, and Kenneth E. Walto, Town Manager. This, this will be here for us to sign after it's corrected?
Yeah, if you want. Is there an original there? Sign the original, correct.
Ken, uh, Ed pointed out to me about the, John, we, we, a mini error on the cover letter.
Oh, yes, I saw that.
Yeah, that cover-
That was a year, that, that wasn't the letter that you wrote, though.
No, it was corrected.
I'm talking about the year.
Yeah, I know, it was corrected. That's what I was reading from a corrected copy.
Oh, oh, okay.
That, that copy's been corrected.
Okay, thank you.
I did not, I didn't read the other one. Um, hang on. Yes, we'll sign the, uh, this one?
Yeah.
And you'll correct it?
Sign the original, we'll correct the first page.
Okay. Would you put the dates in as well? Have the dates in? Before the rest of the board signs is? Did I have a motion?
I make a motion, the Select Board declare May eleventh through May seventeenth as National Police Week and May fifteenth as Police Officers Memorial Day.
I'll second that.
Motion's remain, second, sir. Further discussion? Chief, thank your officers for all they do. Um, they do a great job, as well as you, um, taking care of our town. And, uh, it's, I wish there was more we could do, but, uh, um, this is, this is very nice to honor, um, our lost members and law enforcement agencies over the years, and, uh, we're happy to do it. Thank you.
Want to say something?
Yes, you may.
My son Jonathan's in Washington for this very, for the national ceremony, so you guys are hats off to all of us.
Further comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just so everybody knows, uh, the death exclusion passed.
Oh, very good.
Five hundred and seventy-six to three-eight-six.
Two hundred.
Close to a thousand votes, that's good.
Good.
Return it.
Any results on the Select Board?
Yeah, they, not too many.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Joe.
Congratulations, John.
Okay. See how we got those social amenities out of the way? Um, we're, we're at the point right now, um, where because of, uh, our June meeting, because of, um, the holiday and time constraints as for signing the, the warrant, we need to set up a meeting schedule between now and the end of the fiscal year. Right now, we won't be meeting again in May. Our next meeting is June tenth, and the timeline, Ken, is not right, correct?
Yeah, it doesn't work for getting the warrant posted for the special town meeting. It'll just be two weeks prior to the town meeting. So you couldn't approve it that night and then post it the next day or even that night because it would be too late. So typically in the past, we've held a meeting on the first Monday in June, which will be the third this year. I think last year, we also met on the day, on the Tuesday after Memorial Day, which I recommend having another meeting, the twentieth, which is next week and maybe a little bit too soon, but certainly the day after Memorial Day would be fine. I would have a draft warrant for you to consider and then the following week, uh, final, for you to approve, so we can get it posted in time.
So we'll meet on the twenty-eighth?
Yes, if you'd agreed meeting that Tuesday. And if not, then at least on the third of June, so we can-
We need to meet on the last of June.
We may need to, what, my idea was to have a draft warrant to you by the twenty-eighth of May and then the final warrant by the third of June.
Well, I don't see why we can't do that. Does anybody, cannot do that?
Me.
This is so, so weird, because it's like you can't-
Oh, it's okay. It's, it's okay. Um, you know, if you do have to meet on the third, that could be the, although that's a regular meeting date, or no, it isn't, June, June tenth is, it could be the only thing on the agenda just to take care of the warrant, right?
That's right. Now, if it's in really good shape on the twenty-eighth, which is kind of in that normal meeting sequence, we might be able to dispense, um, uh, with the June third meeting.
That would be good.
And I'll know better than, you know?
So let's do that.
So the next meeting is May twenty-eighth?
Correct. Got that, Joe?
Okay. And then other than that, you can, you're, you're going to have to end up figuring out what your, um, summer schedule's going to be, depending on, uh, whatever's going to take place. Now, the other thing I put down here, and the only reason I put it down, uh, is because of my leaving, and I didn't know what the board's pleasure was on what you wanted to do. And that was with regard to reorganization. It doesn't have to be done now, but I just wanted to throw it out there to see if you wanted to do it now versus wanted to do it later. It's up to you.
I think we should do it, Dan.
You sure?
I agree with that.
Okay. Well, the, the, the po, no, I want to say policy, but the way we've done it, you know, we open it up for, uh, nominations and, um, we, I don't remember if we do Chair first and then Vice Chair. Does anyone remember?
I think it's Chair first and Vice.
Yes, I think it was Chair first last time.
Okay. Uh, so, I'll open it up for Chair.
I'll nominate Bob Bishop for Chair.
I'll second it.
Okay. I would, I would like to nominate, uh, John Boyle for Chair. And, um, the reason, the reason being is, uh, you know, we've, we've tried to rotate, um, people around. It's not necessarily anybody's, um, ability to do it, but John's, John's got a lot of experience and, uh, um, he has been Chair in the past. This will be his third year in this term. Um, so I'd like to s, if I had my way about it, I would like to see him be Chair. So that's my reasoning for, um, nominating John, his experience and, and, uh, timeline. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So we have, we have two, two individuals, um, running for Chair. So, let's see. All in favor of Miss, Mr. Bishop, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain. No, I, I will say aye.
Okay, all right. All oppose? Oppose. All in favor of Mr. Boyle?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? No one's going to oppose?
Oppose, oppose.
I'm sorry.
Okay. So Bob, you're Chair. Good luck.
Yeah.
So at this point in time, uh, take nominations for Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Mr. Boyle for Vice Chair.
I'll second it.
Yeah, are there any other nominations? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? John, you're Vice Chair. Bob, you're Chair. Thank you, um, for your service in the past and your service in coming in the future here. I'm sure, I'm sure, uh, things will go quite well. So thank you, thanks again. All right. So, street reconstruction, oh, okay. Do you want to take over now or do you want to continue on?
No, continue.
Uh, street reconstruction resurfacing list. Now, this is something that Berkshire Gas has been requesting, um, last year, and as you remember, we kind of had a, uh, little bit of a disagreement. Um, but what they want to do is to be able to confirm whatever projects we have. And speaking with Ken, he was, either you were going to speak with Mr. Uffley or have him here. Were you able to talk with John to, uh, find out?
I did speak with him today.
Okay.
And I had hoped, if, if you've got that in your packet, you'll see there's a little format that Berkshire Gas would like to get from us, which works well with our capital improvement program, who is not able to complete it. So I'll just pass it to dispute tables until our next meeting, so that he can complete it. But I want to make you aware of a new regulation passed by the Department of Public Utilities that requires us to notify the gas company whenever we're going to do, um, work on a street that would result in exposing the gas lines of that street. Then it requires our gas company to take a look at those lines and to do whatever repair and replacement work is required. That's a brand new regulation, and I even pulled the regulation to take a look at it. It was effective, yeah, it was effective, uh, just March twenty-second this year. So I apologize that we don't have this ready. I thought we might be able to. John has just not been able to sit down and redo that list, and, uh, we'll have it for you next time, I'm sure.
So we'll put it on the agenda for next, uh,
So I can put future things in.
Next meeting?
Yeah.
Which is the twenty-eighth? Okay. All right, and we have, um, the Wocona Building Committee and, uh, School Committee reports. And it, obviously, uh, we already heard the news with regard to the Wocona School Building Committee that the, uh, debt exclusion vote did pass, uh, and, uh, we continue on from here, and I guess, Ken, we won't have any impact or anything taking place until down the road. This isn't for this fiscal year, it's for, uh, fiscal years down the road. So, um, with that said, as for what is upcoming with Wocona Building Committee is basically working group meetings. So working group meetings, there's subcommittees of the, of the, um, Wocona Building Committee. What's going to be, what's going to be discussed in these upcoming meetings is mainly, um, architectural, uh, and exterior, um, well, I should say architectural, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing issues, uh, colors, um, a development package review. And these meetings are going to be going on from May ninth until July twenty-fifth. And on July twenty-fifth, there's also going to be a school building committee, for the entire school building committee, um, which I will still be on. Uh, and, uh, all these, all these meetings will take place, the subcommittee meetings will take place, uh, at four-thirty in the, uh, no, I take that back. It's, the first one is at ten AM at the Central Office, which is on May ninth. The second one, May twenty-third, is four-thirty at the Central Office. And then the thirteenth, June thirteenth, the twenty-seventh, July eighteenth, and July twenty-fifth will be in the Wocona Library from three to four-thirty. The school building committee will meet immediately thereafter at four-thirty, uh, also in the library on July twenty-fifth. So nothing has changed with regard to that. School Committee was, uh, uh, canceled this, uh, May ninth because there was lack of a floor, so there was no meeting, and I have no report, uh, with regard to that. There is a Finance Subcommittee meeting, uh, coming up on the twenty-first of May, and then a, uh, a School Committee coming up on the twenty-third. And unfortunately, I will be out of town both of those days and won't be able to attend. Uh, there are, or there is kind of an update with the Covington withdrawal. Uh, it's kind of been going back and forth with Covington as to what their educational plan is, in other words, what they're going to do with the students. And at the, uh, Finance Subcommittee meeting of April twenty-third, the bottom line was is that our superintendent has been in touch with Covington's Select Board, again, still looking for, uh, a copy of their educational plan and a single point of contact with the board. She has also requested, uh, or at least offered to, uh, meet with the Select Board there, uh, when, uh, when they would like, but hasn't, hasn't actually met with the Select Board. She has met with the, uh, Superintendent Kazas, has met with, uh, Superintendent- She has met with the, uh, Superintendent Casas, met with Superintendent of Hampshire Regional, um, with regard to students going to Hampshire Regional. And according to her meeting and what she said is that, uh, the superintendent in Hampshire Regional, and I'll read it from the minutes here, informed her that he had met with Covington representatives who indicated that they were not interested in negotiating a tuition agreement with Hampshire Regional because they wanted CBRSD to pay it. Hampshire Regional Superintendent remarked that it is unlikely any district would pay a second district to offer a service which the first district offers. So, in other words, it looks like there's kind of a, uh, stalemate there, and I don't know what's gonna happen. So, um, that's where it is. There's still no movement.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Didn't they just vote at their town meeting not to pay their share of the cost of the Central Berkshire Service?
Yes, yes.
Now, how can they do that?
Well, they could turn it down, like, we could turn it down if we wanted to.
We could go back and redo it.
So, each town has to vote whether to approve the, uh, school budget. And ma- many times, oh, I shouldn't say many times, well, several times in the past that I can remember, we have voted at town meeting, uh, to approve it for town, was it town voter? Or it wasn't a town, was it a...
Done capital projects subject to a debt exclusion.
Debt exclusion.
Actually turned down the school district budget. The way the regional agreement works, if, if five out of the seven towns approve it...
Then it goes through.
Every town has to pay it, and they can...
How do you make them pay if they won't wanna pay it?
Take the recording.
Yeah. I don't know that it'll come to that because they, they have voted down the budget in the past many times.
Yeah.
And, and it, it, and it works out, like Ken was just saying, that the rest of the towns voted in, and they end up paying for it. Anyways, uh, and if they don't, the district can take them to court.
Dallas is betting that position, and we simply pay the bill. Thomas turned it down. The district approved it by the seven towns, and we pay the bill.
Okay. So, that's what I have. Any other questions? I, uh, I'm, I'm still going to be the municipal representative, uh, for the district. So, from time to time, when I think it's necessary, I'll, I'll contact you. And if you want me to come and give a report, I will.
Absolutely, well, yeah, whatever you need, yeah.
Yeah. But just so you know, there, there, there needs to be a representative from the board to the seven-member town advisory committee, which I can no longer be. At least I don't think I can be. They asked me a select board member, I believe. I'd have to look that up in the, in the agreement, but I'm pretty sure it's a select board member. Okay, uh, town manager updates, which Ken has a number of them.
Um, on Cow Power Project, the operation in Granville from which we are going to get power is finally interconnected. You might remember the last time I updated you, they said they would be interconnected, I think by the end of April. They are indeed interconnected, and they're going through their final tests. And they expect to be exporting power, getting the power onto the grid anytime now. And that's where we stand. They're gonna have some type of event on Wednesday, uh, recognizing the start of the Granville project. I haven't gotten a notice of that yet, but I'll forward along to you when I get it. North Mountain Park, uh, environmental company, TRC, will be on site tomorrow at North Mountain Park. They are gonna pull that one tank that's in the ground there, part of the plan, and they're gonna take soil samples. And then we should know soon as they analyze those soil samples if we have anything else to be concerned about. But that's, that's where we are right now. You all should have in your packet a letter from the Secretary of State. I'm pleased to let you all know that the, whose house is being honored on a statewide basis for historic preservation. I think Louisa Horst went ahead and submitted, um, nomination forms to the Secretary of State's office, and we are gonna be recognized in a ceremony on June sixth. Now, we have to give the Secretary of State's office a list of all those we want to, um, attend the meeting. And I think we can have up to fifteen people there. There are already nine folks from the council from the, uh, Star Commission there want to be there. So, if any of you want to go, you know, either send me an email or Judy an email. We have to notify the Secretary of State, Secretary of State by this Thursday. So, please, if you want to go on the sixth of June, let us know so that we can let the Secretary of State know. Old Dalton High demolition. I think most of you are aware of the fact that when they pulled the old oil tanks out, there was some residual oil in the ground. We think it may have been because those tanks were cleaned out from the inside in the ground. And when they lifted it out, when the sludge came out of the bottom of the tank, some of what was left in there reeked into the ground. There's about sixty yards of contaminated soil there, which our consultant, uh, engineering consultant, uh, characterized as a minor release. Our contract calls for removing about thirty yards of soil, so there's gonna be a change order for another thirty yards. And that's gonna start almost immediately. DEP was notified, they've been there. We have a, an obligation to continue to report to DEP as, as part of this process, and that's where we stand with that. We've had, uh, three. This'll be our third change order on the project. Two of them are still in process. We don't know what this one's gonna cost us. We do know from our engineering consultant, it's gonna be, huh, six thousand bucks just to report to DEP. It's a major share of that extra engineering cost. We don't know what removing the soils is gonna cost.
Six thousand dollars for what?
Yeah, just to report to DEP.
To report it?
Just, no, just to do all of the reports.
Oh.
But you'll remember what it costs us simply to remove those barrels from the old landfill. It costs us another twenty thousand dollars to do that. And most of that was engineering costs. So, very, very expensive to comply with requirements that DEP needs.
But the two tanks they took out, that, that's already been covered in, in the budget, right, to be disposed of?
Yeah, that's, that's all covered.
Yes.
What is not covered in the budget is all of the cost for removing the contaminated soils. About half of it's covered, half of it's not. And we're waiting for a change order proposal from the, from the contractor.
Thank you.
One of the other things we ran into, which is very surprising, there were, that building was built with a sub, a sub-basement. And that sub-basement, typically, a basement has about a half a foot of concrete. It had a foot and a half of concrete. It didn't even show, well, I, I looked at the nineteen-twenty-five plans myself, it doesn't show anywhere. So, that was a, that was a change order as well. It's a fifteen thousand dollar change order to get all that extra concrete out of it that we went over last Friday with a conference called "The Deal With The Soils" and "The Deal With The Extra Costs For Removing That Concrete."
Makes you wonder why they did that.
Our engineers think it was done because of the high water table there by putting the extra concrete. It kept...
I was gonna say something to do with the water. I was gonna say to hold it in the building when it floods.
To anchor the building firmly to the ground.
Oh, my goodness.
So, we'll be moving right ahead on that. And even, um, with these changers in process, uh, the, uh, general contractor's kept moving forward. He didn't stop the job and wait till we even negotiated a changer. He kept moving forward with this, uh, to his credit. But, um, the demolition project is about a month behind schedule, just the demo piece. They tell us they're gonna finish the deadline is the end of May. Now, we'll see if that's the way they're working. And that is my report, Mr. Mayor, and I'll see if you guys have any questions.
No, I don't, I don't. Anyone have any questions for Ken? Items for future agendas. Aside from... The street reconstruction project that's, uh... That's gotta be done. I'd like to, uh, I'm suggesting to the board, uh, that you consider making a, a policy for using the Code Red for announcements. Now, we have in the past, like we did this past, this past week, made an announcement with regard to elections. And we've done it for, for town meetings as well, uh, or other meetings. But I, I think it would, I think it would be good if we did it on a regular basis, um, for all town meetings and for all, uh, elections, not just town elections, but, uh, primaries, uh, whatever's coming up that we, that we haven't announced been made. So, I, I'd like to put that on the, the agenda, or items for future agendas for you board to consider down the road, so that it's uniform, that we don't leave anything out, instead of just picking and choosing kinda.
I don't have a problem with the announcement. I have a problem with the way it comes in as, uh, an alert.
Yeah.
And, and I know in the past, I didn't hear about it this time, but in the past, some people got upset because they were driving, and it comes up, uh...
As an alert.
As, as, you know, and they think it's something important. One person drove and parked their car at the side of the road, thought there was gonna be a tornado or something that they're, they're driving into. So, i- is there some way of eliminating that? We need to, uh, for just, if it's gonna be just an announcement of, of a vote or something for the next day, uh, or two, uh, it, it shouldn't come in as a, you know, an emergency.
I don't know how to change that. I do know that when, when Mr. Filio put the message in, he put it in as a message from the select board, not a message from the emergency management, although it doesn't come up that way initially. I know what you're saying.
And it didn't come out that way on my TV either. I, I had the TV on at the time.
Came up on your TV?
Oh, yeah, if you have cable TV, uh, it will come up.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, I deliberately had the TV on.
I mean, I got it on my cell phone, I got it on my phone, I got a text.
It, it comes up on the phone, uh, on the house phone, uh, in the message, uh, as, as an alert.
Oh, you mean as for your caller ID?
But also on the, on the TV.
But the actual message doesn't come up on the TV?
No, no.
No, it's just says...
It's the alert.
Okay. Yeah.
It interrupted my TV.
Well, it's something, yeah. It's something, it's something you can, you, you could talk to Dan Filio about, 'cause he's the one who manages the Code Red. But, uh, you know, if it can be done, it can be done. But I think it's a good idea just to get the voters out, 'cause so many people say, "Oh, you know, I didn't know," or, um, or whatever their reason is for not voting. But, uh, it wouldn't be a bad idea if we could do it on a regular basis and make it, make it policy, just like putting the warrant out, uh, just making it a policy.
Well, perhaps the new chairman will, uh, discuss that.
Or he can just scratch it off. Uh, what I'll do is, I'll write this up, I'll forward it to you, Bob, and I'll send it to Ken. Okay. Are there any other things that, there's nothing out here that I can take off? We didn't go over anything that was already out here. Is there, are there any, uh, items that anyone would like added? Okay. Okay. Which brings us to remarks of the select board. And...
Thank you for your service, John.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I'll be around, but not in this capacity, obviously. I, at least, I think I'll be around. I did, did I get on by, by the... I know, it was pretty much of a gimme, but, I mean, only because there were so many seats that were still open. But I look forward to, uh... To, to, to working in that capacity and still working with the town. And I had a number of things to say, but if people want to, had anything, I know you were raising your hands, hand, Bob, I'll, I'll wait.
But no, I wanted to thank you for all your service. You're gonna be sorely missed, it's head like a bitter sweet night. We welcome Joe, but we have to say goodbye to somebody with a lot of experience and who's taught us a lot.
Well.
You're gonna be missed.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate it.
We'll put you under the fire here, Joe, soon.
I'm trying to figure out which party was bitter, I mean, and who was sweet.
It's never good to say goodbye. It's always good to say hello.
I, I wrote down a few things I'd just like to touch upon, you know?
Well, you got two hours, two, three hours, go right ahead.
Well, I, see, if you notice, I run my meetings until they go right to about nine o'clock, all right? At least a regular session. But I know I said I'd like to push it out to eleven, eleven-thirty tonight, uh, but I won't do that. But, um, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to thank all my supporters. You know, they encouraged me to do the job and to keep on doing it. But I also wanted to thank, um, those people who really didn't support me, or maybe didn't agree with me, which you can't please everyone. But, you know, that, that just gives you awareness of the opposing issues and the opposing side, and that's very important, I feel, to this job. Obviously, to, uh, my family, my wife for putting up with my meetings and my ranting after some of the meetings when I get out of here, not just here but other places, but, uh, it's all part of the job. Employees and department heads, it's always important, they're the backbone of the town. And, um, I appreciate their support and understanding, because there's been some decisions that we may have made, uh, or statements that we, we have made in the past six years that I've been on, that they may not have agreed with. But in the, in the, in the end, uh, there was an understanding, and I do appreciate their support. But above all, um, as for thanking people, I have to thank the board, um, for the work you've done and the way you've helped me out, um, as chair. In the six years, you know, I've, I've been vice chair or chair for over half that time. And we've done some real quality work, I think. I mean, the, 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 the chairs that I've served, served under, John, uh, Mary Cherry, Bob, um... You know, it's, it's a learning experience for me. Everyone has their own style, uh, and way of doing things. And throughout those six years, we've, we've dealt with some really, uh, hot topics, so to speak. The biggie was the pipeline. That was, that was a lot. And there was agreement, disagreement, same thing, and that's with board members as well as with the public. The old Dalton High, uh, it's the same way. That was an up and down, I don't wanna say battle, but debate. And now with our new Wacona High School, uh, which, uh, we'll still be working at, even though we know how we're gonna pay for it now, uh, there's still a lot of work to be done and, uh, ways to, uh, save, save on this project. Now, I've, I've, I've learned one thing, and I tried to do it when I was, when I, in my work before being a select board member, uh, was communication, and that's open communication. You gotta keep people in the loop. You know, when people don't know, that's when people start talking and there start, starts rumors, or you have to put out fires, more fires than you really want to. So, I truly do believe in a lot of open communication as much as possible. What helped me was the office hours that I did. Although I didn't get as many people as I would like. I wish I had started doing the office hours down at the Council on Aging a long time ago, because people just felt more comfortable going to the COA. And I always had people coming in, and I was always doing things for hour and a half or two hours, which was great. And I truly do, uh, truly, truly do appreciate that. The school district, uh, we may not agree what, with what goes on there, or what we do, or what we have to pay, but the thing is, it's, it's over fifty percent of our budget, our total budget. So, we gotta pay attention, and we gotta be, have a, have a relationship, and it's a two-way relationship. And I think it's a good relationship now. As I said, we don't, we don't agree with everything that, uh, goes on or, or what they may do, and they may not with us as well, but at least we're telling each other what's going on. And, and by knowing, you know, it just makes life easier, and it, and it makes working with town government a lot easier. Don't forget to answer the select board phone. When you see that little red light on, you know, answer it, 'cause it was really, it's really nice. I have found that when I return a call, even on a Sunday morning, if I came in on a Sunday morning and that light was on and I called them right back, they were a lot happier than waiting, you know, a couple days until somebody ducked out around to them, even though it was on a Sunday. days until somebody ducked out around to them, even though it was on a Sunday. So I guess what I'm saying, I, I found, and confirmed to myself that you gotta be available, you know, and get yourself involved with as much of, much of town government as you can, be flexible with everyone. I guess these are things that I'm talking, speaking to the choir about, and agree to disagree with each other, because we've done, I think we've done that as a board, we haven't gotten along on every subject, but we haven't torn ourselves apart because of it either, and, and that's what's great, so we can keep on working. It's, it's important for a working relationship. So, I just, I just wanted to put those things out there, and I really do appreciate what everyone in this room has done. Ken, I'm gonna miss our, our meetings and our conversations, and I learned a lot from you, and you're a wealth of knowledge, and I thank you for what you've done. Thank you. Thank you. So, again, it is, it is a little bittersweet for me, I, I, I like the work, but I wanna do something a little bit less, and still be involved with the town, and I hope it works out with finance committee, we'll see, time will tell.
It's not gonna be an easy job, Dalton.
Well, you know, it's, it's, it may not be, but every committee has its, has its ins and outs, and ups and downs, and hopefully it'll work out, there won't be as many meetings, which would be great. But I, I enjoy, I enjoy working with budgets, I, I enjoy still working with the town, I, I can't, I can't say that I don't like working with the town, I do. So, thank you all.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Ken, if you don't mind me saying a couple, this, I know this is designed for the select board, but I can't help but butt in if you'll allow me to speak, and then just say, "Thank you." I mean, most of you, some of you may not know, Ken and I have an extraordinary working relationship for 18 years now, first as head of the DPU, and then as police chief, and I was his boss for a few years, and he's been my boss for a few years, and not everybody gets that, gets to have that privilege. You've been an extraordinarily hard-working member of this board, in fact, I told people, maybe if you didn't spend so much time down at the school district, you would've burnt yourself out, I feel like you gotta get off the board. But that has contributed, I think greatly, to the, to the working relationship between the town and the school district, I know that you're well-respected by all the staff here, and I hold you in great esteem for, for your diligence and for your affability and so forth. And we do have a, just a little something for you here.
Do you want it?
I didn't do that. So they have 10 phones.
I hope this isn't incriminating or anything like that.
I'll have to look it up in the camera.
Yeah, I'll check it out first. The check, the check for green communities, when we went down to Boston, thank you, thank you very much. May I open this? Oh, I have it upside down. This is very nice, thank you so much, and I'll thank, I'll thank all the staff for signing this, this is very nice, thanks again, I appreciate it. Well, with that said, this doesn't really segue into announcements, but anyway, any other comments or that the board would like to make? Thanks again, guys, I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
So announcements, as part of Pro Dalton, the Dalton Appalachian Trail community event this year will be a program to interest families, individuals in taking a hike this summer. The program is called Hiking 101, a presentation will be held on Wednesday, May 15th, at 6:30 PM at the Dalton Library. This evening program will be followed by a June 2nd hike on the Appalachian Trail. The hike will be on a section that is appropriate for beginners, Blot's Road to Warner Hill, and it includes a lovely view, and I can, I can attest that personally, and if anyone doesn't know what Blot's Road is, it's actually Kirchner Road, but Blot's Road, it turns into Blot's Road when you go into Washington and Hinsdale. It's a great, it's a great hike, it's not that long, and it is, when you get up on top of Warner Hill, it's, it's gorgeous. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street, Callahan Room, on Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with the exception of the 3rd Tuesday of each month. On the 3rd Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Town Hall, or 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The Green Dalton Committee is looking for new members, if interested, contact the town manager's office at 6846111, extension 11. I declare that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
I make a motion, we go into executive session to conduct a strategy session in preparations for negotiation with union and non-union personnel in respect to litigation, and to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, Chapter 214, Section 1B, right of privacy, and not return to open session.
I'll second that.
Motion remains seconded, we'll call vote, Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
We're in adjournment for approximately five minutes.